Ms. Bowles, you're on the agenda for giving the invocation. I know you're online. Would you still be willing to do that for us?
Yes, sir, I will.
All right, thank you.
That's fine.
Surprise. Yes, and we'll remain standing for the pledge of allegiance afterwards.
Okay, let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, I pray, Lord, that you unite us, that we may prevail in our community. Dear Heavenly Father, please bless us, that we may be instruments of peace. Dear God, please help us in this city to come together to resolve the issues that affect us all. Dear Lord, we like to pray right now for the families that was involved in the shooting this past weekend. Dear Lord, we pray that somehow, some way, that love would enter their hearts. Dear Lord, please bless this meeting, that it would be what you would have it to be, be in the midst of it, dear Heavenly Father. We ask these, and before I say close out, dear Lord, let us continue to pray for the Potlo family. In these blessings, we ask in that most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, Chapter 4, Title 30, Code of Laws of South Carolina in 1976, the agenda's been posted on the front door of City Hall, and notification of this meeting has been given to the news media. Can confirm we have a quorum with six members present? Correct?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
All right. Okay, first up, we've got approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion by Mr. Bass, second by Mr. Miller. Any further discussion regarding the approval of the consent agenda? All right, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda? Ms. Bowles? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously with six votes.
All right. First public hearing we have this morning is to consider ordinance number 22-012, annexing approximately 1.22 acres, more or less, located at 200 Brook Stewart Drive. It's the second reading in public hearing. You recall, this is the only parcel that the Greenwood Housing Authority currently owns that is not in the city. That is just simply due to an oversight we recently found out a few months ago. We believe it's an old railroad bed. It's adjacent to the Coleman Terrace Apartments. It is currently zoned light industrial. It'll be assigned to zoning designation of R7 to align with Coleman Terrace and be located in Ward 4.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of proposed ordinance number 22-0112? Excuse me, I'm going to rephrase it. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of proposed ordinance number 22-012? Let the record reflect, there are none. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance number 22-012? Let the record reflect, there are none. Now, this is, it looks like all these public hearings are second readings, so I'll entertain a motion before any further discussion.
Motion to approve ordinance number 22-012.
I have a motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Abels. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 22-012? All in favor of ordinance number 22-012?
Aye, bidding vote.
All right. That motion carries unanimously with six votes.
All right. Up next, public hearing number two this evening is to consider ordinance number 22-013, amending the code of ordinances of the City of Greenwood, Chapter 42, Vehicles for Hire, Division 6, Fares, Section 42-207(c). This is second reading in public hearing. You recall from our last meeting that Southside Cab has requested an increase in their maximum fare from $10 to $12 one-way. The last time they requested and were granted an increase was in 2008. Each of those, this fare would be able to be applied to a fare that starts, that begins, and ends in the city. And they're citing the cost of fuel, as we all know, that's gone up substantially in the last several months, and just the general cost of operating a business since 2008.
All right. Well, I know we discussed the necessity for the ordinance in the first place, but I think until we can take up that issue, this is, I think, the next best thing we can do.
And I will add that Trip did some research. There's no law or state requirement that requires us to add this ordinance in place or regulate taxis. So that is at council's discretion at a later time if they wanted to rescind the ordinance in whole.
All right. I mean, I'd be in favor of at least revisiting that as soon as we practically can.
And I know the folks at Southside Cab spoken in favor of any action like that as well.
Yeah, I'd be interested to hear any other, if there's any thoughts otherwise. All right, do I hear a motion?
Public hearing.
Did I, I thought I already had it. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of proposed ordinance number 22-013? Let the record reflect, there are none. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of proposed ordinance number 22-013? Let the record reflect, there are none. All right, now we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance number 22-013. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bass, second by Mr. Miller. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 22-013? All right. All in favor of ordinance number 22-013?
Any vote? Aye.
That motion carries unanimously with six votes.
All right. Public hearing number three for this evening is to consider ordinance number 22-014, amending ordinance 18-011 by amending City Code, Section 20-1, International Fire Code. This is second reading in public hearing. You recall that this updates several sections in our ordinance that reference the International Fire Code. The current ordinance actually specifically adopted the 2015 version. This new ordinance will make sure that the most recent published edition is automatically adopted, and furbage has been added for certain sections to align with the current code and future codes as well.
All right. What, are we operating under the 2018 code?
As of right now, it'd be 2015.
2015, okay.
I appreciate the, it was very clear. I assume Trip did that with the marking of the red of the changes of it. That was very helpful with us being able to see that. Thank you.
I think that was actually Julie, but I have.
We're not giving her credit for anything. We're not, you did it. She's not here. We're not giving her credit for anything.
That's not helped. Thank you.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of proposed ordinance number 22-014? Let the record reflect, there are none. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance number 22-014? Let the record reflect, there are none. I hear a motion with regard to ordinance number 22-014.
Motion to approve ordinance number 22-014. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Miller, second by Ms. Hutto. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 22-014? All in favor of ordinance number 22-014?
Any vote? Aye.
All right, that motion carries unanimously with six votes.
All right. And the final public hearing item of this evening is to consider ordinance number 22-015, amending City of Greenwood Code of Ordnances, Chapter 16, Elections, Section 16-7a, Ward lines for single-member districts established. This is the second reading in public hearing. So, as you're all aware, this, the redistricting process started late last year. The South Carolina Office of Revenue and Fiscal Affairs has assisted us throughout the process. The entire goal is to achieve the one-person-one-vote mandate as outlined in the constitutional and statutory provisions and to align with the Voting Rights Act. Traditional redistricting principles were followed as outlined there on that slide. Just a brief recap of where we've been. In October of 2020, RFA provided their preliminary benchmark report, which was provided to council at that time. January 24th, we held our first public meeting. We had a public comment period open for a period of a month. We did not receive any comments. You'll recall Mr. Rainwater also attended the meeting in January as well to give us a brief overview of the benchmark report that was provided back in October of 2021. April of 2022, we received the first, or draft one of the redistricting plan, and we submitted one change request for wards four and five, just some small changes, just shifting the lines around slightly to get the lines where just kind of.
In character of those neighborhoods.
That's right. Yes, sir. And then, this is going to be final reading tonight. And after adoption, we'll be notifying Revenue and Fiscal Affairs, and then also the Office of Voter Registration and Elections. We'll go over the benchmark report one more time. So, the population of the City of Greenwood was estimated to have decreased since 2010 by 2.6%. The goal population for each ward is that 3,758 individuals that you see there. And then, each of the current populations for your wards is there in the 2020 census number. Again, provided on the benchmark report, some demographic data by race. See the populations broken down by race for each ward there. And then voter age population, again, this is current from the benchmark report for each ward on that side. So the proposed draft population, again, is to align with that 3,758 individuals for each ward. You want to get as close as possible or as reasonable to that number as you can. The goal that RFA outlined for us was to achieve a deviation range as close to 5% as possible. You can see that that range is 5.35% right there. So we're very close to that 5% goal and well under the threshold that we need to be under. And then, some demographic data by race and voting age there for the proposed lines. And we do have the proposed map up here. If anybody would like to take a look at it?
Just clarification.
Yes, sir.
This does not, just sort of stated, this does not take in consideration any of the most recent annexations that we've had, correct?
It does not, correct.
All right. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of proposed ordinance number 22-015? Let the record reflect, there are none. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance number 22-015? Let the record reflect, there are none. We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance number 22-015. Second.
A motion by Mr. Bass, second by Mr. Miller. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 22-015? All in favor of ordinance number 22-015?
Hold on one second. Ms. Bowles, did you have a comment?
I have, I only have, I have one comment. Based on in the community neighborhood association meeting we had on last Monday, the city manager and myself, Julie Wilkie, attended, and the biggest concern the people in the community was having was the fact that what can we do, or anyone do, to increase the intake of the census numbers. They were very concerned with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all agree that there's no way that the population went down in the last 10 years. I don't know if it's a problem you need to, to, what, was it, was it Julie?
Julie, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I, what I was just going to say is I'd be interested in how other communities, the results for other communities, I don't know if it's, if it's an issue just with Greenwood or what. Obviously, you had, since it's in 2020, when coronavirus and lockdowns and all that was going on, it was a crazy time. But undoubtedly, there were communities that increased in numbers. But anyway, Julie, what were you going to say?
I would say just, to Ms. Bowles' point, I agree with her, and to the mayor's point, other communities have been saying the same thing. I've had a lot of conversations with other city managers who have said the same thing, you know, that there's no way we saw decrease in population. But keep in mind, too, that the majority of our annexations and what I feel has been more of our population boom has been since we, post 2019, when we did that boundary and annexation survey. So I think that any kind of, you know, the census always does these projections every year. I think it's called the American Community Survey, and I think those numbers will probably show more of a population decrease, but they're only estimates. So, just to Ms. Bowles' point, I think a lot of our growth has occurred after the residential boom that we've been seeing lately.
Yeah, but I agree with Ms. Bowles. I mean, I think it's important for funding purposes that the numbers accurately reflect the population. I don't know what else we could have done. I think we had a number of nonprofit partners who were carrying the water and promoting the importance of responding to the census as well. But I think I've said it before, if it goes down again in 2030, then we're going to demand a recount. It just, that can't be possible, but.
I don't think it's unique to Greenwood. I mean, I think, I don't know outside of South Carolina how people feel about the census, but I know internally, a lot of municipalities have been disappointed in their numbers.
We do. Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Any other comments?
Not at this time.
Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 22-015? All right. All in favor of ordinance number 22-015?
Aye, bidding vote. Bidding vote.
That motion carries unanimously with six votes.
All right. We have one public appearance scheduled for this evening. Like to recognize Ms. Ann Barclough, representing B City, USA. Could you please make that mic?
Good evening, Ms. Barclough.
Hello. Hello, little bees. No, I didn't. Is it? Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, no bee puppets. I was, oh, he brought you one. I was so happy.
It's been here the whole time.
Yes, I didn't bring anything today. I just want to recognize the City of Greenwood and how much they've supported us with our pollinator gardens and our B City, USA status. And last night, my brother passed away, and I can't tell you how comforting it was to be in my pollinator garden at home. And I wouldn't have that garden if it wasn't for the City of Greenwood, because you taught me how to do it. And so many of these gardens have spread all through. The volunteers have learned to do them, and they're telling their neighbors how to do them. And we've made not just a huge impact on pollinators, but on the comfort that we experience in these gardens, especially when we went through COVID and everything else. People were still in the gardens. And so I want to thank you for your support. And I was thinking today, I was eating a nice juicy watermelon, and I thought, you know, the pollinators. And you can go now to the farmer's market and over there in the stands and get cantaloupe and peaches and blueberries. And that's all because of our pollinators. And Greenwood just stands out as far as representing the pollinators. So I guess we're here to do the proclamation again.
Sure. Well, Ms. Barclough, I'm, I'm so sorry to hear about your brother. That's, that's, our prayers are with you. You mentioned, you mentioned that you learned so much about pollinating from the city of Greenwood. I think you've inspired a lot of other people to, to learn about gardens and pollinating. And I know we had America in Bloom folks here a week and a half or so ago and your name was brought up a lot during that. So, so you're kind of the face of, of pollination in Greenwood, I guess. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. And I couldn't have done it without your support, right? I would be dead in the water if I didn't have support of Billy Allen and Charlie Barano when we started this whole thing. So it's, you know, it's all of us.
Sure. And, and Billy Allen and Charlie Barano were, I know, were great supporters and that's transitioned on through to Julie and Eric Leary. So they, they set a great example. So if you, if, I guess if you'll have me, I'll read this proclamation. Maybe it makes sense for me to come down and read it. We have a proclamation for National Pollinator Week, whereas pollinator species such as thousands of species of bees are essential partners in producing much of our food supply. And whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, diverse urban and suburban ecosystems. And whereas pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing our life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities. And whereas for decades, the city of Greenwood has managed urban landscapes and public lands that include many municipal parks and greenways, as well as wildlife habitats. And whereas the city of Greenwood provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitats in urban and suburban environments. Now therefore, I, Brandon Smith, Mayor of the city of Greenwood, do hereby proclaim the week of June 20th to 26th, 2022, as National Pollinator Week. And as an affiliate affiliate of B City, USA, I urge all citizens to recognize this observance.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ann.
All right.
All right. For new business item number one, we have a request from Claudia Bannerman related to the Wise Wood Community Garden. This request from Ms. Bannerman is to install a separate water meter in Wise Wood's community garden. The separate tap would cost $1,210. CPW has told us that they cannot waive this fee. It's according to their council unless it's in the city's name. The city would also then be responsible for the bill. The last time they waived a fee, it was against the advice of council. That was in 2009. And that was for the Grendel Mill Community Garden. After a contentious vote, Julie has spoken with Jeff Meredith. He does not believe that his commissioners would support it right now, though you can always make that request. We're not clear on why Wise Wood was not originally, like, why they were put on a separate meter, why they weren't. And for a time, the city did cover up to $20 of the monthly fee in Grendel. That's since not, that hasn't happened for a few years. We're not exactly sure when that stopped. It was initially part of the check, the annual check exchange. We know that that's not been the case for the last few years. Don't, again, don't know when exactly that stopped.
Does Grendel still have a, a community garden?
I mean, they do, but I don't know how active it is. It's still rare.
I think the only one that's still in operation is the one at Wisewood.
Okay. I don't know. How many others?
So, and, and it's been outlined, you essentially have three options. Be just deny the request for a tap, approve and pay the tap fee of $1,210, or ask the CPW commissioners to consider waiving the fee as they did in 2009. But you just obviously need to be cognizant of, are you willing to do, do it for all across the board?
Good evening, Ms. Bannerman. How are you?
Very well, Lisa.
Good. Doing well. I remember discussing this with you before, but please tell us anything else we need, we may need to know about your request.
Well, again, I am the last. I was one of the original six and then as they all continue. And being part of the neighborhood association council, we've tried to encourage and to bring back some of them because it's an extreme food desert here, you know? The farmer's market is great, but in terms of a lot of people, the food bank is where they go. My garden is the smallest garden, the Wise Wood Garden, and I normally give over 100 pounds to the food bank. If you want to, I can actually show you some of the pictures of it.
Sure. Is that 100 pounds per what, per year?
Per year.
Per year?
Yes. I manage that garden alone. And it's probably 250 or more dollars just to maintain soil, plants. I have to raise beds because all of my soil is contaminated. And finding that out from the master garden about 2008, it wasn't feasible to have my soil removed and buy more. So I built those beds in there and every single space that you see is pretty much consumed with plant. There's 42 planting stations there. And it goes everything from tomatoes, cucumbers, to watermelons, as you'll actually see on there, and cantaloupes. And as I said, that's over 100 pounds to the food bank. I approximately give around 40 to 50 to neighbors, seniors. My thing is if you don't work, you don't eat, and I can't get my neighbors to assist. So I give to the seniors. And we, you know, I've consumed that cost and it's, of course, getting hardest like everyone else. So any little help would be a plus in this because I've been doing this about 12 years.
Thank you. And so I hate to rely on you for history of, potential history of other gardens, but you said you were one of six gardens throughout the city?
When the FDA asked, that was back when celebrating, when Tony Abels was there, the FDA asked for us to get gardens in Greenwood. They had contributed $400 for six gardens to be started. And said each year, they would contribute to help upkeep, to keep them going, as in the beginnings, plants or what have you. I was one of those. And it was really hard to get others. I think we originally got up to 22 gardens throughout Greenwood.
Wow.
96 is still going, but they became self-sufficient. They sell a lot of theirs into bake sales and what have you. So that's what helped keep them, you know, self-sufficient. And most of the other gardens couldn't do that. It was just enough to, because we're required to give a row out of every planting station to a nonprofit. And I've always done the food bank. But as you see, years went and they all went away because cost, there was no longer anyone to help them, at least $200. Plants are expensive. And, you know, I'm manipulating which way I can to get them, split them, whatever, to be able to plant as much as I do. Because every one of those place, those planting stations is packed. And I get the maximum, but I'm the it, I'm it. So the GIS is, as the other gardens used to be, I'm still the only one.
Ms. Bannerman, do you know why it wasn't originally put on a separate tap?
Honest? I'm a little ignorant too about taps. I'm a former New Yorker.
Sure.
No one told me about a tap. I knew nothing about it.
Understood.
And I guess because I was the smallest, nobody ever felt or said anything, is I just sucked it up and continued to do that.
Yeah, I think you've answered a, a number of the questions I had, especially, obviously it's a community garden. So of course, we, we wouldn't be in the business of just waiving a tap for someone that is just has a garden for themselves in their own yard. But this is, is it on your property?
Yes. When it was originally stated, we were supposed to have them on public areas. I don't know how many of you have seen it with Wise Wood. Our entrances are on Florida and Mount Moriah. Those were the places that they were talking about putting it. As most of the other gardens that were out on public land or outside of their communities, one of the biggest problems was their harvest was taken because you can't control what's removed. If it's out there, people come at night, you see four watermelons, you go and pick them up. I stated that to them and I wouldn't do it. And then Tony said, well, if you would be able to do it within, on your own. And in my property, my property is surrounded by a six-foot galvanized fence. So everything that's planted gets given.
Is there anybody else in Wise Wood that helps you at all or is it just?
I think I just didn't get any.
No.
Yeah. I, I figured it was you. I would, you know, I'm sure you'd love some help, I guess.
Would be nice because as I said, those beds and stuff, they require soil every year. And, you know, I'm a disabled person. So it takes me a heck of a lot longer to do those things each and every year. I think it takes me about two weeks just to get the garden ready every year. So, you know, the planting is the hardest, the harvest is the easiest because I'm taking to people that I know are going to appreciate it and need it.
Sure. What, what percentage of the harvest would you say you, you donate to, to folks in your neighborhood and the food bank or other nonprofits?
The food bank gets at least 65, sometimes 70%. My neighbors approximately 25% and then my family.
And that's senior citizens on, correct? Neighbors that you give it to are senior citizens.
Yeah. I only give to senior citizens. And I'm honest about it because I offered my neighbors and I said, if you come, at least give me a hand. I'd be more than willing to, you know, one hand washes the other, but nobody does it. So for that reason, I only give to seniors.
Has the food bank, since you give them fresh produce and fresh vegetables, has anyone at the food bank, the volunteers at the food bank, have any of them been solicited to help you with this garden? Or the master gardeners may do this as a project? I'm just trying to think of how we can, how we can help you with the actual work and also if you have some people contributing to the cost of, of getting you a separate tap. So if you, if the, you know, if you, a way that people could contribute to your tap without it, so in essence, you wouldn't have to pay the thousand, the, what is it? 1,100?
Twelve, 1,200.
Yeah. So that you personally wouldn't have to, but someone could contribute to a fund, to CPW to get you the tap.
I am also on the Board of Keep River County Beautiful, one of the last original members there. I approached them because, you know, we get funding every year. But it's always about other things and understanding litter is priority. Because that's one of our biggest problems.
Right.
So that was the, one of the only revenues that could. Anyone else, when you're asking, everyone is always saying the same thing. You know, they're all suffering on contributions. I want my neighborhood association, I ask them, you know, contribute even if you're not getting some produce. At least contribute.
Right.
We are barely being able to maintain our entrance signs.
Right.
So it's, you know, it's five people in my neighborhood that contribute and maintain the cost for neighborhood signs. I'm, I'm one of the first that did a garbage can throughout our neighborhood and got several other neighborhoods to do the same thing. You know, we, we, we eat these costs because we can't get people to help us. And we've asked for like 20 bucks a year for my neighbors. I don't have to tell you how much we've got.
Ms. Bannerman, I know an organization that will help you with that cost. And it's very difficult for the city council to set a precedent for any organization for sewer, for, for a water tap fee. And that's why this is difficult. But I do know an organization very well that will help you with that cost in its entirety. I will, I will, I will get you contact information from Ryan and I'll call you tomorrow. I work for the organization and I, I don't, I don't, I don't like mixing my council stuff and my organization I work for, but we'll take care of it for you.
I thank you very much, Brett, in the community, believe me, whether they know it or not.
Yes, ma'am.
But still, I, but I still, I still would like to get you help, physical help. And so that's why I'm thinking, you know, maybe the horticultural department at Piedmont Tech, maybe, maybe, you know, master gardeners.
There's also a, at Emerald and Greenwood High, a workforce development program for, for high school age kids who are able-bodied and could.
I mean, you need, you need, not only do you need the monetary help for the tap, but you need actual physical help in the, you know, we.
At the beginning. In the beginning. Because trust me, picking it off though is easy. It's just a very big, you know, this is.
Are you gonna keep, are you gonna be paying for the water going forward still though, with CPW?
I have to.
Yeah, well, with a new tap, if you get a new tap.
I would have to.
You'll still be doing that, it's just gonna be separated.
It requires more than that's what I need.
Oh, yeah, but with a new tap, she won't have to pay sewer.
Yeah.
She won't have to pay, you won't have to, because this, it would be a separate, it would be a separate meter and she would not have to pay sewer with this. And sewer is double the charge of the water. So her, her bill will, will drop tremendously. But again, if we can get volunteer partners to see what she's doing, that maybe they'll be more conducive to actually pitching in a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we all, I don't want to speak for everybody, I think, but everybody can agree that you don't need to be bearing the burden of, of that. Now, having said that, with the three options we have in front of us, I, I, it appears that we're not denying the request, we're not approving the request. If there's a formal action we're taking in response to this, I think it sounds like Mr. Bass has a solution for you and that, that's great. If for whatever reason that doesn't work out, if, I, I believe Mr. Bass will, will help you out, but for whatever reason it doesn't, I would propose that we at least ask CPW first before we take this up. I mean, basically they're asking us to pay their, their tap fee. I know they claim they, they did it against the advice of council 13 years ago or whatever, but until they tell us they officially can't, I, I think it's their, their tap fee. You know, I, in your situation, I think, I think you're doing everything the right way. I mean, you're right, those two potentially public areas off of Florida or Mount Moriah, those, I, I mean, that is heavily traveled areas that would concern me also.
Yeah, then you put up a sign and say, here it is, come get it.
Right. I mean, I don't know the concern about theft of produce versus theft of a lawnmower or something, but, but.
Let me just give you a little bit, like I said, I have trash cans throughout our full neighborhood. We have them at the entrances. You know, Pomelo Pride, thank God, was the person we got the grants for. We did papers under the trash cans to make them look more appealing. They stole the papers.
Yeah.
So. If you really want to help our plants, they stole the papers.
Paper's lightweight either. I mean, they had to start, I mean, it takes some time to pick up some papers.
But you know, I guess the reason I, I mention all that is I think you're doing everything the right way and you've got the wrought iron fence around your yard. But if Ms. Bannerman ever did not own that property i- in the future at some point for whatever reason, you know, I don't know that the next person would be as, as generous with the garden as you have been for the last 12 years as well.
But the thing, the thing is, basically, you know, if, I think Mr. Bass's solution makes more sense because CP, CPW doesn't want to get into the business of doing this. I mean, that, I think it. I mean, I think it.
So the organization I'm referring to received a five thousand dollar grant recently for food programs. The majority of that money is being used for servicing children of the housing authority, right? And providing food to them. There will be money left, that's left over, and if we can use that to help community garden, I'm sure that that organization would love to do so. I still agree with Brandon though, I think we should still make the request and ask them if this is something, because this, this does not benefit, this benefits our entire community, right?
Correct.
And so this is a benefit of, of everyone. And so I think that if, if, if we, what's it gonna hurt, if you don't swing the baton of the ball, right?
Yeah, if you don't ask.
And so I think we, we should just ask for the benefit of our entire community. And then, but still, Ms. Bannerman, I, I still think there may be some resources available for your garden at the end of this. So, but I, well, I, but I agree with you, Brandon, I think that in my opinion, we should still make the ask, ask staff to, to go ahead and do that, in my opinion. And then, whatever the results are of that, we can move forward with you on that. I'll be happy to update that, yes, sir?
Well, I dealt with CPW here a while back, they won't even trim trees around, around security like anymore.
There is some authority directly to the CPWs from the Attorney General that say if it's not a corporate purpose or core function of the, of that entity, then it acts as a donation that they're prohibited from, from making. So they may be relying on that type of prohibition from the Attorney General. The Attorney General's interpretation is just.
Yeah, it does feel a bit like they're just passing the buck to us, but we, we appreciate our, our partners at CPW.
But if we own, if we own that, if we own that tap, City Greenwood owns that tap, would still be in line with what that, what that is, is that correct?
If the city owns the tap, then isn't the city responsible for the? I think you're, I think you're getting really close to donation.
Right.
Yeah, you can't.
And that's, that's, that's kind of a problem.
But so your, your point is that case doesn't apply just to CPWs, it applies to any government?
Correct. It was specifically for, I think, Gaffney CPW in two thousand and seven or something, but it's, if you take the generalized lesson, it's for any governmental entity that if it's outside its core function or its corporate purpose, then you're, you're crossing the line.
Can we restate that, would that, say it one more time for me?
Corporate purpose or, or core, it's, core function or corporate purpose? I, I can get you an opinion.
And that can be self-defined, correct?
Pardon?
That'd be self-defined, right?
There, it's, it's in the opinion.
Okay.
Not as clearly as you'd like it, but it's in, it's in there.
Well, I know we probably feel like we're getting in the weeds a little bit. Ms. Bannerman, I.
We will.
It sounds like we have a solution for you. We don't want to kick this can down the road any further, so, so Mr. Bass will get with you and we'll probably simultaneously, just so going forward, if this comes up again, if we have interest in community gardens again, we at least have a roadmap of how to handle it, but we appreciate you coming and bringing it to our attention and having brought it to my attention before, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bannerman.
Thank you, Ms. Bannerman.
Do we need to make any, do we need to take any action on that?
I'll go ahead and follow up with, with the Horticulture Department of Piedmont Tech and, and Master Gardeners and see if there's any way we can get some volunteers. So if that's the least I can do.
Yeah, in terms of the, the actual agenda item, is there anything formally we need to do in that regard?
I don't believe so.
My only question would be, my only question would be, are you guys, do you want us to ask CPW to waive the tap fee or not?
I, I mean, I think, yes. And if that, if we need to vote on that, we, we can.
I think, I think it would be helpful, just for the record, if you want us to do that as a staff, to just vote on it so that we have the historical record of you all asking us to do that. I'm not sure they'll approve it based on my conversation with Jeff Meredith and also Trip's interpretation of whatever law he's found on the books, but I think it would be helpful if you want staff to do that, to vote on it.
All right. So it looks like we're, we're, we will be voting on option three if I hear a motion. Well, yeah. It's, it's, it's number two, three, four. But do I hear a motion in that regard?
I'll make a motion in regards to a request from Claudette Bannerman related to Wisewood Community Garden to have staff ask CPW commissioners to consider waiving the fee for the tap as they did in two thousand and nine.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Miller, second by?
Option number four.
Okay. By Mr. Bass. Any further discussion regarding this consideration, this request from Ms. Bannerman? All right, all in favor of having staff ask CPW commissioners to waive the tap fee as they did in two thousand and nine? Ms. Bowles?
Uh, yes.
All opposed? All right, that motion carries with a vote of five to one.
Who opposed? I did.
She will give you her learned reasons why, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Afterwards.
New business item number two is to consider ordinance number twenty-two dash zero one six, amending the City of Greenwood's official zoning map. Ordinance number zero four dash zero two zero by rezoning approximately fifty-three-point-five two acres of land located at thirteen eighty bypass twenty-five southeast from G C, General Commercial to R ten, high-density residential. This is first reading and Draper's gonna cover this one with y'all.
All right.
All right, Draper, here's, here you go.
Let's go. All right, so that, as Ryan mentioned, this is a request to rezone fifty-three acres on the corner of Sweetwater Road and bypass two twenty-one. Went over this recently, but generally speaking, it's currently zoned, general commercial. The request is to take it to R ten, high-density residential. When this went to Planning Commission, the request was to take it to R fifteen, high-density residential, but following the work session a couple of weeks ago, they've changed the request to go to R ten instead. The comprehensive plan envisions this, it's split, about two-thirds of the property is high-density residential, which the request would be in line with. The rest of the property is commercial development, envisioned by the future land use comprehensive plan, and that would, that wouldn't be in line with the request this evening.
So because they changed from R fifteen to R ten after the Planning Commission took up the issue, they don't have to go back in front of the Planning Commission?
No, no. They, you, you can handle this request without going back to Planning Commission.
I mean, I'm fine with that, but could anybody just get denied the Planning Commission and change the request and come for us?
No, but the uses allowed in R ten are the exact same or very similar to R fifteen. It's really just the density that's different, the allowed density that's different. If there was a significant change like that, you'd probably want to send it back, but in this case, they're close enough that you'd be all right.
What's the difference in density between what it would have been at R fifteen and R ten?
So R ten allows for development at a maximum density of ten units per acre, whereas R fifteen would, fifteen for multifamily.
Okay, so essentially, this, this is proposed based on R ten right here, right?
This was the plan they, they presented with the request to go to R fifteen. However, the overall density of the site, even with all one hundred and twenty-four single-family homes and fifty-five townhomes, is three, three and a half units per acre or so.
So it's still within?
Yes, it's well below either, either zoning districts, maximum density.
Is this in Ward six?
No, it's Ward one.
Ward one.
It's in mine.
And then, just for your consideration, staff recommended approval of the request for the high-density residential zone area, but not for the commercial district. Zoning committee recommended denial and Planning Commission overall recommended denial. That was unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission.
So I know we, we had a table before that showed the max units allowed with R fifteen. Do we know what the max would be with R ten?
So it'd be?
Ten.
Ten units per acre. I don't have that, that table directly in front of me. I can bring it to second reading if you'd like to see it.
But the property's how many acres?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three, how many usable?
I don't know that we have an exact acreage of usable land. I know there are significant constraints on the property, but this layout does, does get them where they're hoping to go with the, with the project.
I don't understand why the zoning commission denied the request. I can understand maybe they were scared of R fifteen, but there's no need for commercial down there until we get some residential. So to me, this makes much more sense and these are the price points that we would like to see on the south end of town, in my opinion. And so to have new construction, single-family homes with an entrance both on New Market and bypass, makes sense to me because there's plenty of other areas where commercial development, there's still a lot of open land on that bypass area down in that direction that would be good for commercial once we have residential to support it. And we don't have the residential to support it on that side of the bypass right now.
I definitely think that's food for thought if y'all decide to depart from the comprehensive plan here and rezon the property. The, another thought you might want to consider is that townhomes are kind of a missing.
Link.
Missing link, yeah, within the community, a missing housing type, and this development would provide fifty-five townhomes for the community.
That fifty-five townhomes that are not close to three hundred thousand dollars, that are the townhomes that are being built right now. We don't need additional townhomes built like Hunter's Creeks that are over three hundred thousand or the townhomes that are being built on Calhoun, which are close to three hundred thousand. This would be more of a medium price point, I believe, townhome?
Yeah, we have developers here. I think we can probably answer some of these questions. Well, I guess we have been discussing it, is there any, any clarity you'd like to add to any of the discussion points we've had?
This is Kim Polcock, and he's the actual builder developer, so I'm gonna defer to him.
Sure. And I guess the, the request is technically from the property owner, but you're here on their behalf.
I made the request on their behalf.
Right. Anything, any part of the record you need to set straight?
Well, obviously, even at fifteen, we wouldn't have had a different plan. So what we did is drop back to ten and it, the math shows that it's about three-point-three-seven units per acre. So that's a third, maybe a little more than a third of what we were, what, what could be on there as far as that goes. We're only using, well, there's a total of twenty-four acres, one to twenty-four acres of open space.
Of open space.
And I guess to, to Nikki's point, we're, we're not looking to do anything commercial on the property, y'all aren't at this point, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that something you're leaving open for the future?
We can't really with this.
No, because they couldn't, if they, if it's a rezone to R, R ten, you can't put commercial.
Well, and I, I guess, that's just what I wanted to confirm is that it, the parcel itself has split zoning in it, has it? But this, this rezoning request would affect the entire parcel, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
The comprehensive plan already called for this, the, the other parcel to be multifamily, high, more high-density anyway.
That's right.
But the original zoning was?
General commercial.
And then, but the piece below it was what zoning, R seven?
To the south of it?
Yeah, to the south of it.
It's PDD.
Oh, it's PDD, okay, it's PDD, all right.
So just to be clear, the, the lot is actually not split-zoned, it's uniformly general commercial right now, it's the comprehensive plan.
Oh, 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 so the whole piece is general commercial?
That's right.
Oh, then it makes perfect, to me, R ten makes perfect sense.
I'm gonna ask kind of a.
It makes perfect sense.
A dumb question, but R ten is the minimum to do this type of townhome, multifamily type development?
That's right.
So you can't have R eight or nine with these, that's all single-family?
There is no.
So you can do townhomes or at least attached residential up to six units in R seven, but to truly get into, I think, the townhome type product they're talking about, you need at least R ten.
I, I guess, did, was there any interest on your part seeing the, the future land use proposal of bringing commercial on there? I guess I'm just asking.
I'd be lying if I said we had, didn't consider it at one point, but when we started laying out what was available to use there, we just, it wouldn't work.
Gotcha.
Motion to, can I?
Sure.
Okay. Motion to approve ordinance number twenty, twenty-two dash zero one six to amend the City of Greenwood's official zoning map by rezoning approximately, let me put my glasses on, fifty-three-point-five-two acres of land located at thirteen oh eight bypass twenty-five southeast from?
Thirteen eighty.
Thirteen eighty bypass twenty-five southeast from general commercial to R ten, high-density residential.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Hutto, second by Mr. Miller. I know we've discussed it at length, but is there any further discussion regarding ordinance number twenty-two dash zero one six?
Draper, were you at the hearings?
I was, yes.
Would any community members come out in opposition to this?
No, sir.
None at all?
Nope.
There's no, there's nobody there.
I can understand that, but the, um, what?
It's Hutto didn't show it.
Other than the R fifteen designation, what, we want to respect the fact that Planning Commission made a decision, right? I'm just trying to make sense of it.
My understanding, sitting in the Planning Commission meeting, was they're concerned with the vol, the volume of new units that are being approved, of rezonings that are occurring, and that haven't started to rise out of the ground. And so I, I think they're kind of getting to the point where they would like to see some progress before they recommend approval of additional units.
That was the next question, I mean, we understand we're looking away from potential other parts of town to the south end, I, I guess, is there, what would they approve? What would they approve, Planning Commission? And just from your experience?
I, I think just generally across the board, they're concerned with the volume of, of new units. And so to answer that question, I'm, I'm not sure how many approval votes you'd get right now from Planning Commission.
For anything?
Yeah.
And, but if there was progress on some of these, then potentially that would, I, I, I don't want to, I guess, probably getting too much into having you try to handicap what their thought process is, but.
Yeah, I don't.
That's what you took. Yes, ma'am.
Are you, are you objective?
Yes, ma'am, yes, Ms. Bowles.
Okay, did, did I introduce, talk about how many are, can they put on per?
Ms. Bowles, you're, you're cutting out on us a little bit.
Okay, how many units and R, can you put on R in, uh, per acre?
So you can do ten units per acre, so in theory, they could get up to around five hundred, but with the site constraints, that's not gonna happen.
With R ten?
Yeah. Because it's ten units per acre, you have fifty-three acres.
But there's twenty-four usable acres.
Right, but they're not all usable.
Ten units per acre?
Correct.
Okay. And with R fifteen? Okay. And with R-15?
Whatever 53 times 15 is.
So R-15 and the chart that we got said, and I'm guessing there's something else that said 534 for single-family.
And just to, just to clarify, I mean, the, is there a...
Okay.
The proposal for a PDD, is that, what, where does that come in? I mean, is that, is this something that's ripe for some type of planned unit rather than specific zoning, whether it's MBR, BU, BUDD, PDD?
I mean, those are definitely possibilities. There would be more work up front with required submissions and so forth to the Planning Department. This would, it would also be a significant enough departure that you, you'd have to be sent back to Planning Commission. They'd have to offer a recommendation to you prior to that, but that is an avenue, and the Planning Commission may be more comfortable bringing a favorable recommendation forward as the plan would be locked in once, once you voted to approve it, assuming you did, you took that action.
What's great is we have two readings, right?
That's right.
So, um, I would, I would do that. I, I will, I'll save my next comment for after we finish our vote, but I want to come back to it before we start anything else, okay?
Understood.
Yep. Most on the table?
Yeah.
Ma'am?
Lucy on the table.
Does it most check?
Yes.
Right. Is there any further discussion regarding ordinance number 22-016? Right. All in favor of ordinance number 22-016?
For R-10?
All opposed to ordinance number 22-016?
It's for R-10. She asked what it was for.
All right. For, for the record, I'm going to go back and, and do this again. We have a motion on the table as, as stated. All in favor of ordinance number 22-016 as stated? All opposed? Ms. Bowles, what, what is your vote?
My vote is yes if it's R-10.
Okay. I mean, it, it is. I, I want to, that, that's how it's written.
Okay.
So I, I just bear, bear with me. I want to do it again, just because I, I don't know that we can have votes kind of qualified like that, so...
Do you want me to read it again? Because I'll state it again.
I, I think we, I think we, I think you stated it well first time. So all in favor of ordinance number 22-016?
Aye, big go.
All right. That motion carries unanimously with six votes.
Before we start, before we start anything else, Ryan, Julie, Draper, Trip, can we have a work session with the, at a minimum, the people that we appoint to Planning Commission and have conversations about, not, not to give them, tell them what they need to do, but I think we need to make sure we're on the same page with those folks. And, and, and let them understand our thought process so we can understand their thought process. Do you, do you guys agree?
I, that's, that's a good idea. I, like, like you said, not to, not to try to twist arms to get them to think like we do, but, and I speak to some of these, some, some of those appointees sometimes. I, I think it would be beneficial for both...
I do, too.
Both entities, both groups.
So if you can get that arranged?
Are you asking only for certain appointees or for the whole commission?
I mean, it probably makes more sense for just city appointees that certainly don't want to be accused of trying to, trying, trying to discuss anything with folks from 96 or Ware Shoals County, from, from the, the, the bodies that appoint them. I, I don't want to get anything started with them.
But I, I do think if, if everyone's invited, there's no, anything wrong with that, but I still think that, because their votes matter to decisions that we make as well, right? And I, but I, I do think that specifically those folks in particular, I, I think we need to invite them to a meeting for us just to sit down and us to have good conversation about what direction that we're trying to go in from a zoning standpoint. We've, we've, you know, we've got an assistant city manager here that's, who has expertise in this. We're, we're trying to responsibly grow our community, and, and I, and I think that would be very helpful for us to be able to make sure we're on the same page, because their, the decisions they make really do matter a lot. And so we, we want, we want to make sure we're on the same page.
There's really no new development on the southeast side of town.
There's, there's nothing that should be more exciting to our community than this.
That is the...
I mean, to me, it's very exciting to have something.
That's the area we're trying to draw people towards. And so, Draper, perhaps you could facilitate something having, understanding the, the training that they receive and, and the, the instructions they, they, the charges, I guess, they take into their decision-making process, but...
And I want to make sure I'm very clear. We're not trying to influence what their decisions are. We're just trying to make sure we're all on the same page of where we are.
We've lacked, we've talked about this in our retreats before, in some of our planning meetings. We've lacked kind of an organized vision of this kind of thing, and I think this will help us in a way to just working with them on what they hear from anybody they might talk to, or what they might think in their decision. And then as we kind of try to make a plan going forward when it comes to, you know, where we think infrastructure works for developments like this, then I think it would be productive to have that in place.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I think there's value in it, definitely is there. The Planning Commission's role is to provide y'all with, with technical advice on a decision. They're supposed to evaluate it using their expertise and, and provide a recommendation that way. And I think sitting down with them to make sure you're getting the best quality advice is a, is a good move.
Thank you.
All right. New business item number three is to consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Greenwood County for the continuation of E-911 addressing services. Historically, the county has provided those addressing services since the inception of the GIS system. We recently realized that the current ordinance applies solely to unincorporated areas of the county. So there's no formal agreement currently for the service right now. The county plans on amending that ordinance once all the municipalities in the county have signed the agreement. And the goal is to not just have a unified entity controlling the addressing. That obviously has impacts on our joint 911 system, but it's to avoid road naming duplication in roads that are phonetically similar and spelled similar. So, Brad, go ahead.
Would they still, I, I mean, if there was a road naming request that we had, would they take into, into account our wishes in doing so?
I, I think they would want to adhere to the current guidelines that they have set for themselves.
I mean, I don't even know what those guidelines are, but I mean, if, I mean, as long as it's not duplicative and doesn't affect 911, I'm looking at now, um, I mean, I can't, I'm sure we can't bind them to take our recommendations, but I mean, if it's a unique name that doesn't create any confusion, any, no duplication, no, nothing offensive, I would hope that they would at least consider our wishes.
Yes, I, I think we could certainly submit a request, Nick.
Yeah. Okay.
I want to make sure we're clear. Brandon, when I read their things, it specifically says in B, the guidelines for addressing, where no name is suggested, use of facility, use of family names or names reflecting a religious or philosophical viewpoint will not be used. These names are often viewed as being in honor of the person or group, such as, such a practice can result in controversy and potentially undermine the effectiveness of this project. Exceptions made, may be made for names of historical significance. And again, that's, they can interpret that however they wish, but I would say that that's something we need to consider.
Yeah. I mean, I know exceptions can be made for names of historical significance. I mean, I would, I don't know what the percentage is of roads that are named after somebody, but they're, they're there. So it has to be, I mean, that's got to be done at some point, unless you're just going to name them one, two, three, you know, green, red, orange, I mean, unless, unless there's some meaning behind it. So I, I think it's how you interpret historical significance, I mean, whether we're talking on a, you know, national level or local level.
Another route that I know Julie's discussed in the past is a road dedication, which has to be done through the state legislature, too, so...
The, so road dedication where, for instance, the, like, say coming over the, the bridge in Ware Shoals, it's, it's the W.T. Jones III or Junior, I can't remember, uh, bridge or highway or whatever. That's done by the state legislature?
It's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay.
Lawrence last week had a section of one of their roads created as a Memorial Drive or Memorial Avenue. And, and legislators were there with the unveiling of that sign, too, so, but it was a short section in their town that I saw, so, but it was not renaming the road, but it was signifying that section or that entire road was the Memorial Drive or that section or that road.
I mean, that's the one I'm most familiar with, yeah. All right. Again, I know we've had much discussion about it, but do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Greenwood County for the continuation of E-911 addressing services.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Bass. Any further discussion regarding this proposed authorization? All right. All in favor of authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Greenwood County for the continuation of emergency 911 addressing services, or E-911 addressing services?
Aye, big go.
All right. That motion carries unanimously with six votes.
All right. New business item number four is to consider resolution number 22-006 to authorize the city manager to sign an infrastructure reimbursement agreement with Milford Pines Development LLC for Milford Pine subdivision Phase 3. So as you can see, we, we've already accepted the roads and gone through the infrastructure reimbursement for, or approval for the first two phases of Milford Pines for Phase 3. The amount, which was calculated by our city-county engineer, Rhett Templeton, is $319,763. We had the letter of intent received on May 25th, 2020, and roads were accepted by council in January of this year. They do have a maintenance fund which expires in May of 2024 in the amount of $51,620 if any issues with the roads arise. And once again, this is approved via resolution, so it only takes one reading.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
A motion to approve resolution 22-006.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Miller, second by Ms. Hutto. I guess Mr. Templeton's here. I, I understand that you recommend approval. Is there, is, just for argument's sake, is there, would there be an argument for us not to accept that? Any reasonable argument, I suppose?
The recommendation coming out of, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation from our department is in line with the infrastructure reimbursement policy as it was, as it stood when brought to us. So they provided all the proper documentations, the information, the areas that are being reimbursed qualify based on, based off that ordinance. So I don't see a reason, unless you have, y'all's opinion is different, to move forward, but from a policy standpoint, it makes sense, and I don't see an argument against it.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for Mr. Templeton?
Mr. Templeton, do, the amount that we'll be reimbursing, when did, when did we come up, when did you come up with that number? Is that based on current, if we were to repay, if we were to build those roads right now, those are based on receipts, is that correct?
Yes, these are based off receipts. They reviewed this. The developer provided invoicing for the construction of these roads along with copies of paychecks to show that it's been paid for as lo, along with a release of lien affidavit for these projects. That's a requirement of our policy, but it's done based off of what is actually spent, not off a projection of what it costs to do again.
Thank you so much.
Any further discussion regarding resolution number 22-006? All in favor of resolution number 22-006?
Aye, big go.
That motion carries unanimously with six votes.
All right. And new business item number five is to consider executive, an executive session for discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements for development of proposed affordable housing. And there is the possibility of council taking action, which we recommend. Motion to enter executive session for discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements for development of proposed affordable housing with possible action taken.
Have a motion by Mr. Miller, second by Ms. Hutto. Any further discussion regarding the proposed executive session? All in favor of going into executive session for discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements for development of proposed affordable housing?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously with six votes.
All right, can we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22-007. Resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of annexation agreement, ratifying and confirming a trash fee reimbursement letter and other matters relating thereto. And this is for Havenwood Mathis II.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Bass. Any further discussion regarding Resolution number 22-007? All right. All in favor of Resolution number 22-007?
Yes, very much so.
Motion carries unanimously with six votes. Is there a second motion?
I'll make another motion, Resolution to approve Resolution 22-008. Resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of annexation agreement, ratifying and confirming a trash fee reimbursement letter and other matters relating thereto. And this one for Havenwood Mathis II.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Bass. Any further discussion regarding Resolution number 22-007? All right. All in favor of Resolution number 22-007?
Yes, very much so. The motion carries unanimously with six votes.
Is there a second motion?
I'll make another motion, Resolution to approve Resolution 22-008. Resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of annexation agreement, ratifying and confirming a trash fee reimbursement letter and other matters relating thereto. And this one for Havenwood Mathis II.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Bass. Any further discussion regarding Resolution number 22-007? All right. All in favor of Resolution number 22-007?
Aye, very much so. That motion carries unanimously with six votes.
All right. Just a couple reminders here. The special election filing dates opened on June 14th but close on June 24th. As of last week, we know that at least two people filed. Did not know the names at that point, and have not followed up any further. I don't know if anybody else has talked to Connie Moody to get updated info on that. But so those are based on current war lines, and obviously with the redistricting lines that were adopted in that, those will be reflected through the election, the general election in August. The filing dates for those are August 1st through the 15th. And just for those that may not have seen it in the memo, we were recently awarded $480,000 from the CTC for our road paving for this coming year, which is pretty exciting. That's about $108,000 more than we were awarded last year, so we're very thankful for that. It's going to help us get a knock a good chunk out. We had a meeting today, Draper and I attended, with District 50, several law enforcement, local law enforcement agencies, and the city and county fire about a reunification, an active shooter drill that's going to be taking place on July 12th. What was the location of that, Draper?
Emerald High.
Emerald High School. So that's training that's obviously very timely, and something that District 50 is committed to doing on an annual basis moving forward, which is good to hear. Also, I thought somebody had a question. And then bids are due for Foundry Park on June 28th, so nice to see that we're finally gaining some traction on Foundry too. And we're currently reviewing the proposals that came in for Gray Street Park Phase Two. So it looks like we're making some good progress on all the parks now. It feels good to finally be moving forward.
Two male candidates filed for War Two.
Could you repeat that, Ms. Bowles?
I said two male candidates filed for War Two.
Interesting. Okay. Two men. All right. Okay. And Thursday of this week, we have Leadership Greenwood, Class of 2022 graduation. That's at Connie Maxwell. As we've already covered, the filing days for War Two closes on June 24th, and we have a festival coming up, which is very exciting. Going to be hot and heavy in the planning of that, and it's going to be another awesome year. Really, really excited.
Yeah, we're currently in the planning, the local stage. I'm working on that.
We got a new stage, too.
I understand from Laura. That's exciting. Local stage will take the hand-me-downs from the main stage. But yeah, check out local stage Friday and Saturday. And I know we're still in the throes of the festival of flowers all month long here in June, and in the middle of that, I know I had some baseball going on, but I went out before the parade Saturday morning that I guess you mentioned you had attended, and the event wasn't in the city, but and I'm not sure how much, I saw city logos on certain promotional events for the Juneteenth celebration. I was at the Civic Center Saturday night for the event they had out there. My buddies from...
I went downtown.
You were there?
Yeah, downtown.
Oh, downtown. Uptown. Uptown.
Downtown, uptown, downtown, in town.
Also, tons of rec kids are going to the state playoffs, right? I know my kid is going, bringing your kid, make it.
No, no, that's a sore subject. No.
There's a lot of Greenwood County Recreation League softball and baseball teams going to the state playoffs right now, so that's pretty exciting, too.
So Avery's team made it, is it? Or they play next weekend?
They play this summer, Friday at Longview Guts.
Okay, well, good luck to them.
I gotta go.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor of adjournment?
Yes, very much so.
That motion carries unanimously with six votes.
That's what...
All right. Just a couple reminders here. The special election filing dates opened on June 14th but close on June 24th. As of last week, we know that at least two people filed. Did not know the names at that point, and have not followed up any further. I don't know if anybody else has talked to Connie Moody to get updated info on that. But so those are based on current war lines, and obviously with the redistricting laws that were adopted in that, those will be reflected through the election, the general election in August. The filing dates for those are August 1st through the 15th. And just for those that may not have seen it in the memo, we were recently awarded $480,000 from the CTC for our road paving for this coming year, which is pretty exciting. That's about $108,000 more than we were awarded last year, so we're very thankful for that. It's going to help us get a knock a good chunk out. We had a meeting today, Draper and I attended, with District 50, several law enforcement, local law enforcement agencies, and the city and county fire about a reunification, an active shooter drill that's going to be taking place on July 12th. What was the location of that, Draper?
Emerald? Yes, Emerald High.
Emerald High School. So that's training that's obviously very timely, and something that District 50 is committed to doing on an annual basis moving forward, which is good to hear. Also, I thought somebody had a question. And then bids are due for Foundry Park on June 28th, so nice to see that we're finally gaining some traction on Foundry too. And we're currently reviewing the proposals that came in for Gray Street Park Phase Two. So it looks like we're making some good progress on all the parks now. It feels good to finally be moving forward.
Two male candidates filed for War Two.
Could you repeat that, Ms. Bowles?
I said two male candidates filed for War Two.
Interesting. Okay.
Two men.
Two men. All right.
Yeah.
Okay. And Thursday of this week, we have Leadership Greenwood, Class of 2022 graduation. That's at Connie Maxwell. As we've already covered, the filing days for War Two closes on June 24th, and we have a festival coming up, which is very exciting. Going to be hot and heavy in the planning of that, and it's going to be another awesome year. Really, really excited.
Yeah, we're currently in the planning, the local stage. I'm working on that.
We got a new stage, too.
I understand from Laura. That's exciting. Local stage will take the hand-me-downs from the main stage. But yeah, check out local stage Friday and Saturday. And I know we're still in the throes of the festival of flowers all month long here in June, and in the middle of that, I know I had some baseball going on, but I went out before the parade Saturday morning that I guess you mentioned you had attended, and the event wasn't in the city, but and I'm not sure how much, I saw city logos on certain promotional events for the Juneteenth celebration. I was at the Civic Center Saturday night for the event they had out there. My buddies from...
I went downtown.
You were there?
Yeah, downtown.
Oh, downtown. Uptown. Uptown.
Downtown, uptown, downtown, in town.
Also, tons of rec kids are going to the state playoffs, right? I know my kid is going, bring him. Your kid make it?
No, no, that's a sore subject. No.
Well, there's a lot of Greenwood County Recreation League softball and baseball teams going to the state playoffs right now, so that's pretty exciting, too.
So Avery's team made it, is it? Or they play next weekend?
They play this summer, Friday at Longview Guts.
Okay, well, good luck to them.
I gotta go.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor of adjournment?
Yes, very much so.
That motion carries unanimously with six votes.
That's what...
All right. Just a couple reminders here. The special election filing dates opened on June 14th but close on June 24th. As of last week, we know that at least two people filed. Did not know the names at that point, and have not followed up any further. I don't know if anybody else has talked to Connie Moody to get updated info on that. But so those are based on current war lines, and obviously with the redistricting laws that were adopted in that, those will be reflected through the election, the general election in August. The filing dates for those are August 1st through the 15th. And just for those that may not have seen it in the memo, we were recently awarded $480,000 from the CTC for our road paving for this coming year, which is pretty exciting. That's about $108,000 more than we were awarded last year, so we're very thankful for that. It's going to help us get a knock a good chunk out. We had a meeting today, Draper and I attended, with District 50, several law enforcement, local law enforcement agencies, and the city and county fire about a reunification, an active shooter drill that's going to be taking place on July 12th. What was the location of that, Draper?
Emerald? Yes, Emerald High.
Emerald High School. So that's training that's obviously very timely, and something that District 50 is committed to doing on an annual basis moving forward, which is good to hear. Also, I thought somebody had a question. And then bids are due for Foundry Park on June 28th, so nice to see that we're finally gaining some traction on Foundry too. And we're currently reviewing the proposals that came in for Gray Street Park Phase Two. So it looks like we're making some good progress on all the parks now. It feels good to finally be moving forward.
Two male candidates filed for War Two.
Could you repeat that, Ms. Bowles?
I said two male candidates filed for War Two.
Interesting. Okay.
Two men.
Two men. All right.
Yeah.
Okay. And Thursday of this week, we have Leadership Greenwood, Class of 2022 graduation. That's at Connie Maxwell. As we've already covered, the filing days for War Two closes on June 24th, and we have a festival coming up, which is very exciting. Going to be hot and heavy in the planning of that, and it's going to be another awesome year. Really, really excited.
Yeah, we're currently in the planning, the local stage. I'm working on that.
We got a new stage, too.
I understand from Laura. That's exciting. Local stage will take the hand-me-downs from the main stage. But yeah, check out local stage Friday and Saturday. And I know we're still in the throes of the festival of flowers all month long here in June, and in the middle of that, I know I had some baseball going on, but I went out before the parade Saturday morning that I guess you mentioned you had attended, and the event wasn't in the city, but and I'm not sure how much, I saw city logos on certain promotional events for the Juneteenth celebration. I was at the Civic Center Saturday night for the event they had out there. My buddies from...
I went downtown.
You were there?
Yeah, downtown.
Oh, downtown. Uptown. Uptown.
I'm down, uptown, downtown, in town.
Also, tons of rec kids are going to the state playoffs, right? I know my kid is going, bring him. Your kid make it?
No, no, that's a sore subject. No.
Well, there's a lot of Greenwood County Recreation League softball and baseball teams going to the state playoffs right now, so that's pretty exciting, too.
So Avery's team made it, is it? Or they play next weekend?
They play this summer, Friday at Longview Guts.
Okay, well, good luck to them.
I gotta go.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor of adjournment?
Yes, very much so.
That motion carries unanimously with six votes.